Tom, you're right here.
We're done, it's all in.
The only thing that I added was a little.
Should we be here with like an hour mouth?
Yeah.
That was my best search, I had that on.
You don't hold your breath.
Right, I know, I know.
Three, two. Uh, yeah, hopefully.
Is that for tomorrow?
I'll straight space there.
I don't have to do, but I know this is all six thirty.
So you guys know the meeting, the meeting is over because there's much as Tommy signed this.
Bill. He's right on my mind. That's Tony when she was coming back to.
Yeah, that makes for a long day. I'm already going to get two minutes. Go in.
You should always make sure you know what's going on. Just said, you know, since master. They're all, you go to the church, but we're not. Kind enough to find your service. If they were ready to do this one, so it says.
They're gonna go right under.
Brew, you can prove it so long.
We're starting to process now.
Or you get the leads. We can have a discussion on that. Contract.
My answer was, because I can follow.
Yeah, I can find.
All of us is all water.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get this meeting, uh, called to order. Roll call, or, yeah, roll call.
Tom Harwell. Ben Keel.
Michelle Adam.
Roy Johnson. Kirby Whitehead.
Wendy Nancy. Amy Schut.
I was careful.
Alright, and we're gonna do that location with Pastor Ryan Clark from St. John's Lutheran Church.
Am I facing this way or this way? Alright. Well, I was, uh, I was praying about over the last couple of days, Lord, what should I say? And then I remembered there's a passage in the Bible from James chapter one that says, "If any of you lacks wisdom, you should ask God, who gives generously to all without finding fault, and it will be given to you." In other words, he's saying, uh, God will give wisdom to anybody that asks him. No matter what you've done, no matter how bad you've messed up your life, if you ask God for wisdom, he always gives it. And so I said, okay, Lord, so, I'm supposed to ask you for wisdom, or what I should say to the, to the city council? And he, I believe the Lord said to me, and that's exactly the passage I want you to share with them too. Uh, and I just thought about it, you know, uh, thank you guys so much for your willingness to serve on, on this committee and, and you serve the Lord by serving, uh, by serving this community and, and I'm sure there's a whole lot of difficult things that you have to deal with, uh, a lot of, a lot of things that need wisdom. And I just want to encourage you as you do this job, uh, that if you ask for wisdom, the Lord's always gonna give it to you. And so, let's, uh, let's just open this with prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this great promise that you've given to us, that whoever asks you for, for wisdom will have it. And so, Lord, we come before you, we tell you thank you for all of these men and women that are serving you by serving us in this community. And we ask, Lord, that you would give them all the wisdom that they need for every decision that they have to make. I ask that you would bless them, Lord, and that as you once said to Father Abraham, that you would bless him to be a blessing. And I pray this in Jesus' name, amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we're gonna make a couple changes to the agenda. We are going to take under new business item A and move it into under the consent agenda, which is the asking contract. Um, we're going to add the audit right under the consent agenda, so item seven. Well, six B, yeah, six K.
Yeah.
For the next, so, um, that was the only things I think we're changing. So then I'll need an approval for the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second that motion.
Oh, with favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Well, we'll go to the audit. Consent. Oh, the consent agenda that we just changed it all up. Do you have any questions under that?
Yeah, the only thing I want to add on, uh, under the minutes April 2nd for management coordinating meeting, I'd like to add the fact that Roy Henry, uh, the resident was in attendance at that meeting.
Okay. Anything else? Alright, motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll second.
Oh, with favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Now we'll go to the audit.
Alright, thank you. I mean, you heard with that, we performed your 2018 financial statement audit. Then the result of that is that we issued an opinion on your financial statements. We issued a modified or clean opinion, so the best opinion you can get. This part of that, we also test for seven different areas of Minnesota legal compliance and issued a report on that too. Um, which we issued a clean report there. Prior to the meeting here, in the work session, we went over some detailed information, uh, which covered your general fund activity, special revenue capital project funds, and also looked at your enterprise funds. We also went through a number of different ratios, which gave some pure comparison to other cities of similar size throughout the state of Minnesota and also within Wright County. Um, we had some discussion and answered some questions and I'd be happy to take any further questions that you want me to add.
Anybody?
I have no questions.
Done. Alright, so then we're gonna need a motion to approve the audit.
I'll make a motion to approve the audit. I'll second.
Okay, Tom?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Uh, Kirby?
Aye.
Albert, aye, and Lloyd?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much. Thanks, good evening.
Uh, Brew, open forum.
I brought the whole pictures and they got passed around without. We have a con behind her also, all of you, you know, because we've discussed it many times before. We have had an issue with muskrats. And we thought we got them eradicated, we don't. The, our yard and the yards on each side of us are collapsing. We started to have this issue a couple of years ago. We had four Quint dump trucks of older ground and covered half of the shoreline on, on the north half of it. Uh, even that has begun to sink because they've tunneled under it. So we've got large holes that are forming in the backyard. Our neighbor to the north of us is really bad and they've had their yard brought up with the retaining wall so it's level. They have really deep holes and they, I mean, it's gonna cost us a lot of money to fix it. We're not asking you to do anything about that. What we're asking for permission for is to eradicate the muskrat. I did call DNR today, talk to Congress, a conservation officer, and asked, do we need a permit? Do we license and what do we need? And he said, no. They are one of the animals that are considered able to take at any time. The only thing that we can't do is poison them or relocate them to DNR property. So, well, the reason that I'm here asking tonight is to find out if we can have permission to shoot them. We are within the city limits and that is what the DNR requires is that we come to the city for permission to do so. We've tried with a Siogun, you know, a, one that shoots seventeen hundred fifty feet per second, and you still can't kill them that. So we don't know what else to do. That's our only other option. Uh, even hiring somebody to trap them, they're still gonna shoot. So if you have a different suggestion, I'm, I'm open to hear it. Otherwise, that's what we're asking for. We don't have anybody behind us, we don't worry about that.
No, but my only concern though is ricochet off the water. Um, I mean, there is that, that, and, and as well, you know, you have the rocks there. I mean, I, I know that, I know that there are pain in them and hard to get rid of. Um, have you guys tried like conbear traps? So quick kills, so when they go into it, it would snap and, and break their neck instantly?
No, I don't, I haven't even heard that. I mean, I don't took the inlet if it were a live trap them.
Why won't they let you poison them?
Because, because, because when you, when you get it poisoned, you're, you're in, my guess is because they're into the, into the water area, from the pond in the backyard. Now you're getting into, um, natural wild, like your, um, uh, your fowl, your water fowl and other things like that. So that's why I'm sure that and then other neighbors, cats, dogs, things like that, um, because you aren't able to control what's getting into the poison. Is my speculation. Um, I, I guess, what are you proposing, proposing to shoot them with?
We were thinking a twenty-two, um, we've got a three level deck. We do from the top deck, you're shooting down, uh, so you're not hitting, you wouldn't be hitting rock or anything versus being underground level and shooting across. You know, we're not looking to have a twelve inch shotgun out there or, you know, a submachine gun or anything else.
Although you'd like that.
I would love to. But the only other thought I have, honestly, is if the city had a pump where we could drain that pond out, even if it was just like forty-five to sixty days, and then let it refill naturally, I think it would be enough. If there's no water, they're not gonna stay there. So that was my only other thought too. And we don't have a pump or anything, so.
I have no idea.
Yes, I couldn't say that.
Yeah, where would you go with it?
Will you just pump it into the outlet?
The only, my only thought would be, I mean, if we get into a, a drier area coming up, hopefully we won't get this snow again. We might be able to temporarily dam the, the runoff that comes from the north, from down on the trailer park, and then pump it into, onto the other side of the road. So it's still draining to the same place. It's just, moving a long grass.
I know at one time we had to rent pumps when we had the waste fire plant got so high and we had to rent cars. I answered them off their body after that and I can't remember. I know one time we did not have a power to rent them.
There was a Wilson Rock group a couple of years ago too, they had water and I don't shine those guys.
I think they rented it. I think they rented it.
Oh, that was when they rented out the PTO and the judge and director.
Yeah, I think they rented it.
Have we ever allowed them to shoot, anybody to shoot muskrats completely?
No, but we, um, the city itself had permission to shoot geese for a while to get them out of our waste fire plant when they were ruining our plant. We have permission to do that and we've given a couple of different people permission to shoot geese on the turnip property. So we have allowed people to, you know, out of pageant or to shoot, you know, out of pageant.
Didn't we have a right to shoot the owners?
You know, just until they're, until they're gone.
Yeah, to eradicate them.
Yeah, and it shouldn't take too long, I wouldn't think, to do so. So wouldn't we forever or for, hopefully not once a month, hopefully we can have very short periods of time. How many did you have somewhere? Uh, at one point we had two dozen. Uh, we're down to, uh, two, three, four. I know two for sure that, that are only one's gonna be, so it's probably gonna be ready later on.
So have you talked to your neighbors about the shootings?
Uh, I have talked to the neighbors on the north and I have talked to not the one directly self, but the farther one self, and they're okay with it. The people across the street are okay with it, which aren't really affected other than the noise. Um, I have not talked with the two that are off of Seventh Street at the end. I have not talked to either of those, although potentially other than noise, it wouldn't really be affected.
I would lose the noise consideration.
Okay, this is something that the city is considering. You do currently have an ordinance which prohibits discharge of a firearm within the city limit. So I would say if you're, if this is something that you're interested in allowing, that you should process it as a variance to your code, um, just so that you have the conditions of that in writing as opposed to just conversationally.
I think last time we did it as a resolution because it's a all the time thing. Is that something we could put?
I would give it a little more written stock than doing it as a oral resolution tonight, but yeah.
Specify a timeframe.
Yeah, yeah, timeframe probably require notice to all the surrounding property owners just.
Obviously, we also carry firearm insurance to the IRA, that helps.
No, I, I'm not concerned about that.
There's a lot of consideration.
No, I mean, I, I would definitely not, um, and I'm sure your, your husband would, would take into consideration using short silver long rifles as well on the twenty-two.
Sure.
You don't have a lot of concerns.
No, I, I mean, I, I just, I'm just looking at it from being a firearm owner's side and how things get along proportion very quickly, even though like herself and her husband are doing the right thing, getting the right commissions and I'm sure you're gonna take the proper concerns and care. Um, that's all I'm looking for it from.
I have a suggestion. If it's something you are thinking of doing, like Amy said, it should probably be in writing and notify the neighbors.
Yep.
We're talking about doing that workshop on the twenty-ninth of April. I think, could we come to that workshop? Could they pass? So we're gonna, on the twenty-ninth of April, there's, we're gonna have a special meeting or a workshop on other ends? Be something they could add to the agenda? Maybe we could put that right on the agenda, according to acid.
You could, yeah. Typically, as long as you advertise it as a meeting at which all of her, as opposed to a typical workshop where you would just be discussing.
Yeah, and then we could, so she doesn't have to wait until May, you know, I don't know when they have their little ones, but if it's something.
Pretty much all the time.
Something you can get rid of in your own agreeance and stuff, I mean, we could, we could act on it.
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, if you have a better option, like you say, you know, even pumping the water out was certainly safer, but if, you know, I don't know if we have capability yet, so.
Was shooting the, the DNR's recommendation?
They said that or live trapping.
Okay.
And, uh, I don't know, debate them with their.
I mean, live trapping, you gotta kill them anyway.
Well, but bitch, you look at, so that's.
That's kind of slowing you down.
Yeah. Versus like a, a conbear or shooting them is very, um, is more humane.
I will check. My, my worry too is we do have those very large pumps that have eight and twelve inch height for them, building lots of water. But I know that we have them out at some of these property or cattle jacks to keep their cows from playing. Right now, but I'll check with them as well. Hopefully I have.
This day then also in the resolution would say to notify the sheriff department, if there's something they're aware in case they were to get phone calls.
Well, I would want something to be writing pretty good. If I got the knock on the door, I'd be like.
Yeah, yeah, I'll do, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Wright County sheriffs?
Yep.
Uh, council?
Let me start, start. Okay, March thirteenth, staff meeting planning zoning, uh, eighteenth of the works and play meeting, nineteenth of April 2nd, Wright County Board of Commissioners. Everybody in town got one of these guys, right?
Oh, yeah.
You gotta make sure that if you have a problem with the assessed value of your home, you need to contact the assessor's office in the county right now, because once the tax statements come out, it's too late. Um, just wanna let you know that there's a public hearing scheduled for April thirtieth at nine thirty down at the government center. We're gonna discuss the five year capital improvement plan plus issuance of bonds from the new government center and law enforcement training center. That's the, that's the training center that the FBI is, uh, contributing two million dollars, I think. Ever that's still the case, right?
Over two million.
Over two million, yeah. And then, uh, meeting here in City Hall, meeting with Shannon Sweeney from David Brown Associates. Denver, high, are trying to get the Economic Development Authority rolling here and re-vamped in town and functional. So, uh, David, Shannon is gonna help us adopt an enabling resolution, uh, because nobody can seem to find the original on the town here. We also talked with, uh, Dwayne Northay from Wright County regarding economic development, so I'm anxious and excited to get that ruling. We had a chamber of commerce meeting on the twenty-eighth and then a management coordinated meeting on the second.
Well, I'll go next. Um, city council meeting, uh, Montrose Day Celebration Committee meeting, um, fish fry. I'd like to thank everyone who came out and supported us. Um, it's a great event. Um, and the fire department.
Um, I did city council meetings, a couple staff meetings, um, conference calls in regards to urban property. Out of town council meetings, fish fry.
Council, park and rec management meeting, coordinating meeting, planning and zoning, uh, maintenance meeting.
I just had the city council meetings, it's the last council meeting that we had, so it was a slow month last month. The Highway Patrol Safety Unit before the last council meeting.
Yeah. Alright. Kevin?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, personally, the agenda is our monthly activity report. Uh, nothing too exciting on that one really for most part. Uh, any questions? I can field on that. Uh, the next one is to accept the personal leave of absence for firefighter Jessica Binkley effective March fifth, two thousand nineteen. It's a six month leave of absence, so if you look for promotion, everything, a lot of that.
Make a motion to accept Jessica Binkley's, uh, leave of absence request. I'll second.
Um, Kirby?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Albert, aye, Ben?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Next one would be a motion to accept the resignation of firefighter Josh Menard effective March tenth, two thousand nineteen. He, uh, moved out of the area. He's currently living north of Howard Lake a little bit, so he's not within our time parameters for response anymore. So he served with us for two years and two months. He's hoping to move back in the area in the future, at which time we'd gladly take him back on. So looking for a motion to accept his resignation.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of firefighter Josh Menard. Second.
Um, Albert, aye, Ben?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Uh, the last thing is the formal presentation of our yearly annual report. Um, I'm just gonna bring up a couple of key things, um, throughout the report. On page four, it indicates that we currently have, as of January first, we had two hundred and forty years and seven months of firefighting experience within the fire department, which is pretty heavy, so, um, it's great to have that around with us. Um, we had a bunch of resignations throughout twenty eighteen, which kind of hurt us personnel wise, but we also took on a total of seven people throughout the year as well, so up and down, and that's just the way that our numbers go, always have, always will, so, um, a lot of the stuff just gets carried over from year to year. Um, fire prevention and community events, we maintain to be very involved in the community, doing as many community events and being available for the events as we possibly can. Um, as in years past, we did fire prevention with, uh, Montrose Elementary School students. Um, that FPA awareness message for twenty eighteen was look, listen, learn and be aware that fire can happen anywhere. So that's what we kind of taught all the kids as they came down. Um, on the next page, um, special mention information, we received two semi-large grants throughout twenty eighteen. One was a DNR firefighter grant, which is for equipment. Um, that was a twenty-five hundred dollar grant. We had to match another twenty-five hundred dollars, so five thousand dollars in equipment we got for half price. The other one was, um, a gear dryer, which is now in service in our station. That was a, oh, a seven thousand dollar grant that we got through the State Fire Marshal's Office, so, still trying to work out the kinks of that, make sure that works for us. Um, the twenty eighteen calls for service, we had a total of two hundred and fifteen calls for service, um, up quite a bit from twenty seventeen, not quite our highest ever, but, um, still very busy. Um, majority of those, eighty percent of them were medical type related calls, um, which is consistent throughout the years past as well. We usually see seventy to eighty percent as, uh, just our medical rooms. Um, the city of Montreal is responsible for sixty-five point one-two percent of our total calls. And then the rest was out in township areas or neutral eight other cities, so, um, majority of our time is spent here in the city, so. Um, call hours, we had nineteen hundred ninety-nine point one call hours, so, um, throughout the year. Little bit up from the year past, um, kind of is a weird number to look at, because when we're down on people, that number gets smaller. Our average turnout for twenty eighteen was ten point six five, whereas in previous years, it's usually around twelve, but we were hovering around nineteen to twenty people for a big portion of the year, so now with our numbers back up, that number just gradually increases as well, just by the mathematics involved with it, so. No real major calls, couple of structured fires, um, nobody was hurt or, well, one minor civilian injury and one, um, minor firefighter injury. Um, otherwise, there was nothing huge or monumental to report throughout the year, so. If you have any questions on that that can field with Roy, that's all I have.
I just wanted to say, it's first one of these, I was saying you better get a gentleman.
It hasn't been a year since I've done it. I tried to do it, so. If I could, I'd give it done earlier, but I gotta wait for everything to get submitted through the state and cleared out and stuff, so. Takes a while to do, but I'm happy to do it, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Matt?
Mayor and Council, you're packing. You'll see our, uh, Park and Rec Commission meeting minutes from April first. I'm just trying to hit some of the highlights. Uh, egg ox coming up on April twentieth here. Uh, I do believe filling the eggs is April eleventh, fifteenth?
Five o'clock.
That's City Hall at five o'clock. So if anybody wants to come fill, piece your eggs.
So if anybody wants to come fill Easter eggs.
Okay, so on that note?
Yes.
Are you gonna talk about that?
Yeah, we can talk about that. You guys, the question once again came up of whether or not we need to have a, a resolution by the council for expenditures for recreational events, um, specific to the ones that have been approved by the commission. The question is, does it need to have a?
Motion.
Does it need to have a motion, or since if it's done by somebody with a spending authority, knowing that we do not exceed our already pre-lotted line item?
Okay, first thing, I want to send this to me, and I don't have spending authority, so yes, you need a motion, so I can do that.
Okay, well, like you said, for previous discussions we've had, whether or not it's been like Wayne, if he gives specific direction to appoint specific, like, if we ask, hey, we need somebody to pick up X from this, and he said, yes, we can do that. If it's a temporary spending authority to do that, or for anybody that's not Wayne, I think it's just Wayne, yeah, that has spending authority.
And so when you used to have Sean on your, Sean is the liaison, he has spending authority, so it kind of, you didn't have to rework doing that, but now without anybody on your commission, you have the passing authority, you need to get the council, I want you to go to council to do that.
Or is it, I mean, like for like, you know, like last year, we actually had, we had just, I just sent emails to Wayne to say we'd want to pick up this, like for, uh, the splash event last year. And he basically just said the Redwood Clack, it was directly built in the city, but he gave authority to do that, basically saying, we're basically getting like a pre-invoice that says this is what it's gonna cost to do X.
I mean, at some level, the council needs to approve what you're doing. If the council has previously said this year you can spend X on this event, then it doesn't need to be reset because they already said that.
I mean, like last year, we did have, I mean, the council did do a motion to basically approve, as long as we did not exceed our pre-lotted financial.
Why don't we just do that, that seems simpler.
Well, we do the budget, we do the budget, and we budget so much for recreational programs.
Yep.
But it's for spark, it's for the park, it's for open gyms, so there's no set amounts for anything.
Okay.
So they really just need to come and just ask for a motion to purchase, I don't know, which one, 4,000 pieces of candy or a certain dollar amount, or do you want to do it? We should just get a motion from the council.
I mean, I mean, that was one question, too, whether or not we do it at the beginning, basically, once the, like you say, it's been finalized. If we get a motion basically once a year, we wanna try to do it once every event, or, cause I have no problem putting it not to exceed a home that we. Typically, it's always been in our minutes for every one we have planning, like even there's a preliminary one for this, uh, summer splash. And we're kind of looking at a dollar value spending this time, but I would have it finalized probably, so closer to next month. But, I mean, I don't know how the council wants to, to handle that, I guess. It really doesn't make any difference to me.
I think for minute-wise and for records, it's better to do it for the event.
For each event? Just do a, a dollar value not to exceed, and then just stipulate what that allocation is meant for specifically? Okay. I guess then today we'd be looking for a motion from the council for an approval for not to expend anything more than $450 towards an egg hunt event, mainly consisting of candy and small trinkets for filling Easter eggs. Quaney's gonna be, we are anticipating 4,000 X. Um, we're looking for a split of about 75% candy to 25% small trinkets. Um, as well as potential of a reimbursable for the rabbit. I don't know if, Michelle, if you had any update on that? Since we had skate day characters, we had a local group coming to do that, we had expended $125 to have three youths dress up like characters, Ozana, Elsa, and Olaf at our skating day event. Um, for this particular event, the person who has been doing the Easter bunny has requested compensation. And our discussion felt that it was not, since there is no bylaw or city statute that requires parking rec members available to us to put on recreational events, that it is still within their, I would say, right to request some additional form of compensation for doing something above and beyond, I mean, dressing up as the Easter bunny for, you know, a couple of hours is.
A couple of carrots won't do it?
No. I, the number that was thrown around was a hundred dollars. It's not exceed a hundred dollars. So we had thought, we, it's gonna be up to you guys, but we had approved that there's definitely money in the budget to compensate this individual for a hundred dollars. Uh, Michelle was looking into by chance getting another, a different Easter bunny, or somebody who will lend a volunteer to do it. I don't know if there's anything.
I was gonna wait to see what the council wanted to do.
Okay. Uh, we've included that in our now to a 450 dollar assess, assumption.
Is it 450 total for candy?
450 total. Last year, we spent under 300, so assuming escalation like 350 dollars for 4,000 pieces of candy, plus the hundred dollars, if the council wants to do that. So that was included in our 450, and even last year's budget, I think it came in 1,500 or $2,000 below budget. So this would only be a benchmark of a hundred and fifty dollars increase from last year, so.
We seem to be expending a lot of energy on something that we weren't gonna have to begin with. I don't, how about this get out?
It's not, it's just not out of control. This is an event we've had for many years, and it's the largest event that we've had with community participation. And I'm not gonna turn the kids away, so that's why we're continuing to get it. Um, typically what we've spent, like Matt has said, we.
About $300.
About $300, but we didn't fill, that was a mix last year, you think?
We filled about 4,000.
That we didn't fill, I'm sorry, that we didn't.
There were still substantial ones that we did not fill, but we filled basically 4,000.
So if we spend $350 on candy, it would give roughly a hundred dollars for the bunny. Um, that was the discussion that's part of the rec meeting. Uh, my take, my input on that was, um, we get our Santa is volunteer, our photographer is volunteer. We thought we'd bring it to council for discussion and see what they want it to do.
What was the, so the consensus of the park was to go with saying yes to a hundred dollars for this?
The consensus, the, we took a motion on that, um, it did pass, that we were okay with an expenditure of a hundred dollars towards hiring an Easter bunny.
Okay. Okay. Um, is there a precedence that we have of hiring people to do these things?
I think, I think the only times we did was in the last two years from a local group of youths that do dress up like Disney characters and stuff like that. Um, they had, I had them do my, one of my daughter's birthday parties, it was a lot of fun. The last two years, we have had though them, and we have paid them. Uh, last year, it was just two characters for a hundred dollars. This year, we did three to include all of them.
That's a professional company.
So that's, that's a hundred dollars for?
Hundred fifty.
A hundred?
Hundred twenty-five.
Hundred twenty-five for three?
For three of them?
Three of them for an hour.
But that, that's individually or total?
Total.
Okay, and we're looking at a hundred dollars for one? And that is a commission member, too?
Yes.
Now, commission members are paid, correct, for meetings and things?
We are paid for every attended park commission meeting.
Just the meetings.
Just the meetings.
Just the meetings.
Not the events. Don't you think?
I, I don't know what to think, because it's, if you hire an outside company to do it, that's one thing, but then one of your own commission members stepping in and saying, yeah, I'll, I'll volunteer to help do this, pack all the eggs and everything like that, but then if you want me to dress up in an Easter bunny outfit for an hour and a half, a hundred dollars for a personal company.
Our events start shortly at 10:00 and we're usually gone by 11:00.
I'm just overblowing the.
I know, I'm just saying, I mean, you gotta have all the bags, so it's about an hour.
A hundred dollars for an hour. Um.
I just, I think it'll, that sounds a little steep to me. Well, then, I just, I don't know, then if we do other events in the future, then if it's.
Your, you know, be your precedent.
All of a sudden, then, whether it's a, a different park and rec event and somebody wants to, just, an example, they wanna get paid for making all the hot chocolate. All the time they've spent making the hot chocolate for a skate day event or whatever, I don't, I don't know. And I'm not exactly sure where I sit on it, just, I could see it leading down a road of more and more, I'd. But if you're gonna pay someone to do it, then I'd say you pay the professional company to come out, and they have an Easter bunny and two of their helpers, I don't know.
Or, or we pay them what a, what we pay them for a typical meeting, park and rec meeting, is that $25?
Yeah, that's correct.
Just add it as another meeting.
I can sub with that a lot easier.
Yeah, I can too.
Is there a motion to do that? Or any more discussion?
I have no more discussion on it.
Okay.
If the commission member turns down the offer of the $25 instead of a hundred, then what's the course of action after that? What's the?
We find the bunny.
For a volunteer?
Either, I guess, or.
Well, I'm sure we can get a vol, somebody to volunteer. We get our volunteer to do Santa while Santa comes from the.
Santa, Santa does it out of their own, they get compensated their own right, they simply request that they receive any pictures that are taken so they can use it for advertising. So they get some form of compensation, it's just on monetary value.
Our photographer, I quote, um, is volunteering, so.
Some of them, before I do believe that, once again, use it as a, a business opportunity, a little card and stuff like that, so they're gonna compensate. The only thing we have to say is that I am not aware of any bunny outfit. Currently, that commission member owns her own outfit.
I have an outfit if needed.
Okay.
Just saying.
So that it's still 450, we pay them 25 bucks?
No, I would probably suggest that we would do the 350 plus 25, so we have not to exceed of, of.
Okay, I would say 400. That's fine, I remember years ago when we filled the eggs, that had to go back and get no more candy because.
I think the last two or three years that I've been a part of it, we have not, um, I mean, worst case scenario, I might be back some candy, so.
Okay, so what we, uh, we wanted to give Wendy's spending authority for this, since you go right ahead.
So that's two separate motions, then, or all rolling?
Well, you could make it one.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Well, I have a motion to, uh, give Wendy's spending authority to purchase the candy for the Easter egg hunt. Um, and, uh, to pay the Easter bunny $25 for a grand total amount to exceed 400 dollars.
400, is that right? I'll make a motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, Ben?
Aye.
Almo, aye, Lloyd?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Kirby?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, uh, next inter meeting minutes was the skating rink at Northridge Park. Um, we had brought this up once again, the last city council meeting, that we will be looking, um, mainly me, Wayne, as well as, uh, me and probably Matt Menard, since the fire department has been, uh, basically been saying that they were gonna start filling the rinks to make sure that we try to find a local spot in Northridge if we wanna put up that second ring for next year. Um, as well as we have an existing, uh, privilature layout for some additional trails, that are gonna go up there that would need to be updated. If we put a ring up there, the thought process would be that would be, most likely be a, a permanent fixture out there. So mainly so we can have the, the walking trail would be located right next to the rinks, which might be a little accessibility for flooding as well as for people walking from a lot over there, but, uh, that's kind of on our to do this for the summer. Barry to walk it, and then for me and Wayne to walk it, as well as me and Matt to walk it, a couple times, and then update that, uh, preliminary layout.
So is the park trail all the way down already?
We have a, a general, last year, we did look at three different kind of, uh, layouts and try to get some additional budget, you know, that square footage or linear footage for how much we think it was gonna cost. So we had kind of come up with, um, what we had recommended for the layout. So just be making sure that how we need to try to alter that if we find our desired location where we wanted to put this ring. So see how it affects it, so. Uh, financial update, summer splash, uh, we had just started looking, coming up with that. Summer splash is on July 20th, we're still looking to have that, once again, at Northridge Park. Um, it's gonna be very similar to last year, we'll end up having a, probably have a new giant inflatable water slide as well, so I'm in the fire department out there. The, uh, ice cream truck was a big hit last year as well, as well as, I mean, the fire department was out there, we'll have an ambulance out there. Um, I'm gonna be looking at pricing and getting quotes and everything for that, so hopefully we'll have a little bit more concrete. Uh, we'd still be, last year, I think we spent $300, I think we're looking at probably not spending more than about 450, cause we wanna add the dump tank this year. So city council members, anybody wants to get volunteered for the dump tank, like you guys did many years ago, we sold the sign back behind Wayne's office, so. More than happy to, to dunk all of you.
I could be excited.
I know, I'd be happy to dunk all of you.
I don't know what to call it.
So if anything, we might be looking for the volunteers, I'm sure maybe some, Janner Scoop from the fire department.
Lloyd, we. Can I get people out?
But, but that's.
We're reading lines for Kevin next year.
Yeah.
All the fire department guys, I'm sure with this.
Let's get a face friend to Kevin, and just say it's Kevin.
There you go.
All right, so, um, once again, we're not looking at probably charging for you this, 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 I'm gonna be just, uh, volunteer. I know Barry's already volunteered to use his truck, and I have a suburb, so.
I have a trailer too, but.
Yep, and Barry said he has a trailer too, so last year, trying to get the big, uh, inflatable inside of our UConn was a bit of a challenge. We got it, but it was a bit, so.
It's worse going back.
It was worse going back, it smelled like, uh, like we just came back from the swimming pool for about a week.
And my UConn as well.
It was a lot of fun, so, but, uh, more stuff coming from that, but then not, not spending a whole lot more than we did last year. But, uh, very similar than what it was last year. Um, Carver Field, I guess, is on the second line item, but we'll just go to community gardens. Uh, just again, one another note that community gardens, uh, signage starts mid-April here, sells $20 for a reserved spot. Last year, all we did is have the ones down over by the horizons, over by the regional park there. Uh, we do have some that would still be available out at Northridge, but, uh, last year, nobody claimed those, so they just kind of grew over. Once again, we'll see if those will be taken this year, if not, that might be something else to remain in putting the, the ring.
Years ago originally, that was allowed for the, there's no more, um, how do I say this? They allowed the gardens to stay in Northridge Park for the people that were running them at that time, because they had put time and money into them. But once they were done doing them, they were going to be closed down, so that nobody else could go back there.
Correct, I, I believe that is correct.
So the people that were originally doing it, how long are they doing it, that people see them over?
Okay, well, that's what we know, like you said, if we don't do the ring, we won't be seeing it, it's already kind of.
You'll probably be right there.
It's, it's not super great grass over there anyway, it's mostly weeds.
The ring will probably be on the top of them.
So, but, but that, that's all I had for the meeting minutes, uh, I guess now we have the question or the discussion on Carver Field concessions. Uh, just note that we had a discussion regarding, um, a particular group that currently does concessions at Carver Field when that community had baseball, um, has theirs, or has their baseball games. Um, it has been a, I would, I would just say a precedent was set at least over the last few years that it's basically, we're using it as a, it's open, the city's not charging them for it, any sort of profits are set aside similar to, you know, a for-profit, a third-party for-profit, like, uh, Montreal Stays, and that any of that money would go back into Carver Field projects. At the meeting, a discussion was had that was requested that certain monetary items were gonna be taken over by the city. The recommendation by the commission was that we felt that if the city did take it over, we'd have to be taking over staffing and everything. Basically, we would be, that would be our little entity. We made a recommendation that felt that if we use it as a rental space, or a, similarly to the community center. So if a third party wanted to fill our rental agreement. So if a third party wanted to fill our rental agreement form and use that space, that they'd be allowed to have, I'm gonna call say fundraisers or something like that, in that space selling concessions, as long as they have the correct permits and everything else for that, we'd be use it as a, based on that rental space.
Don't we have some type of recording requirements, Twins thing?
The Twins grant is in January next year?
Yeah. We have some reporting requirements in terms of money flow through the concession stand up there.
So, we've got Boheanyad possibly applying for a Twins grant to do some improvements at the field. And part of that grant asks for budgeting items, what's been spent on the field, what kind of money you've taken in on the field, all that kind of stuff. So that was kind of the discussion was, if the same people are gonna keep doing this concession stand and have been doing it, the money would have to be turned over to the city so we can keep a count of it for this grant.
So I think like, like an annual, like, I mean, I don't wanna, like, I would almost say like an annual rental agreement? That basically says.
Well, but you rent, so you rent your park space, like your park shelters you rent for twenty dollars a time, twenty-five dollars a day?
It's something like that unless we consider that more or less a.
A day, a day. So it's twenty-five dollars a day, so you're gonna allow somebody to just rent it for twenty-five dollars for the whole season?
The thought, if you, the electricity in place was stated. Well, you have to pay a twenty-five dollar deposit. If you don't use the electricity, you get it back. Unless you're a nonprofit organization, then you have to come in front of the city council and get prior approval.
I think if it's just, if we're assumed a nonprofit, that it needs approval. If it's considered a for-profit, or if there's any gray area, we would just need the city council basically to waive that. We feel that it's a, in order to try to have the city take it over in its entirety, there's a lot of time and money to do that, and if somebody's willing to, I would say, volunteer their time in order to do this, we didn't have any problems with basically just saying, it's filled the form, it's a rental space, we have no problems with waiving the, you know, the agreement to say that, okay, you know, whatever line item comes in, and then I don't know if it's at the end of the season, that we would just, more or less, the city would get a check to say, these are all profits that are from us, I don't know how we try to handle that, but I don't wanna see something, you know, somebody walk away to say, we can't do this, because I don't see, especially for the season, there's no way to try to get any staffing or get anybody with any experience. I have no idea how to run a concession stand. What we need, what's out there, a lot of stuff that's out there right now, the city doesn't own, it's privately owned, it's just stored up there. So I don't know how we try to show that we have that. At least a line item that says we are needing some monetary value coming in, I don't know if we just show it as a, like you say, it's a rental agreement.
Does it depend if the, if the city's not using, being used to buy the stuff? Because if the city's not using their money to buy stuff for the concession stand, they will just keep the rental agreement.
Well, that was our original discussion, I mean, you all know Michelle's one who runs the concession stand. An original discussion with Michelle during the time we talked about doing this grant was that she would purchase the items, if they wanted to continue running the stand, she would purchase the items, bring the receipts to city hall, we would reimburse her for those items, and then she would turn the money over, like, on a weekly basis, so we could keep track of it. Because if we're gonna have the concession stand open, and it's gonna be part of this grant, we have to have paper trail for it all, for the grant. Otherwise, your other option is to close the concession stand and not have it open at all, and then you just, you don't report it to the state, because it's not even open.
Well, your third option is to have the third-party vendor purchase their own supplies, in which case the city has nothing to do with it, and then, like council member said, it would just be a rental fee that you would have to keep track of, or even make a one-time for the season rental fee, and then the vendor would be responsible for all the, all the products that they keep themselves in it.
Or, I guess they're really concerned with having the, the third-party buy the products and then basically run it, but then, they are now in control of the city's money, and I, I see a, a little bit of a murky water.
Well, not if they're buying, I mean, it depends.
If they're being reimbursed from the city and then having to basically bring the profits to the city on a weekly basis. Our concern is just that, I mean, I'm not gonna say, but skimming off the top.
Right, that's, well, so that's option one, but option two is, they buy the product themselves, they keep the profit, which is a really profit.
Would, if they were to lose money or something like that.
City's only involvement is the rental of a shell of a building, the same as if some organization were to come in here and hold a benefit. We wouldn't buy the pancake mix. We would say, please give me a hundred dollars to rent the building and do whatever you want in it.
But then we lose the accountability for the Twins grant.
But we don't need accountability if it's not our product.
If the city's not making.
We're just renting.
They're money.
Aren't they looking for cash flowing through Carver Field?
I, I haven't read the grant word for word, I think Wayne and Deb had, and that was their suggestion, was what I understood.
I mean, they, like you said, they might be looking for, you know, how, more or less more of a question, how involved is the city with making sure that they run concession stands? Versus just, like you said, you want a third, I, I don't know, I.
And it depends on what kind of cash we're talking about, too. The city still has cash running through the field, if you're renting the concession stands for twenty-five dollars a day, you're getting twenty-five dollars a day, you know? So is it that they need to see you operating the concession stand as a city business? Or is it that the field as a whole needs to be making some kind of money? I would say, if the grant is the make or break factor on all of this, you need to have the grant looked at, and then it's just a question of how you, as a city, want, if you wanna operate this as a city business, or if you just wanna operate it as a rental property, it's up to you.
I believe the grant is just showing that the field is being used, is my understanding of the grant.
I didn't read it, so I don't know for sure. I just know when you were talking about a mandate, that was what was discussed in it, so.
And then the third party is also looking at potentially doing fundraising throughout the, this summer, and then doing like an end-of-the-year donation to the city, for using, whatever. Done.
You'd have to call, but Hanover got one of those grants from the Twins. And I believe their concession stand, and there they serve beer, because they have softball, adult softball fields also, but that's run by their, the Hanover Athletic Association, which has no connection to the city.
The same with Populovs.
So they must have, yeah, they must have had to approve in some way, the need for the improvements, because they got, I think they got.
They also require, they also require that Twins grant, because I've, I've seen that baseball fields that I play at, that whatever they will give, the city has to match.
Right, I know there was a match, but some of the matching came from the athletic association.
Right, and it's a beer model.
But we might call there and find out about writing the grant. They might have some good advice on how to write that grant.
If we.
And that's what the fundraising would be for, is to give it back to, because I think it's a ten thousand dollar grant, a Twins grant, ten or fifteen or something?
Usually ten or eleven.
Ten, I think, so.
Is, is there a way that we can get more information on the grant thing and put it on the chamber for the special council meeting? But just, you know, because Deb's not here or Wayne.
Right. I didn't read it. I mean, I didn't read the grant all the way through, so.
And for the, for the shop, we don't do this for you, do you? Still with Deb, too?
Yep. So take it to the special council meeting on the twenty ninth?
I think it'd be good to, so then we have more info on it. It's around, I gotta see if I can.
The only thing is, we need a license. Soon. And the third party typically purchases the license, so. I don't know, sir, I told you, man. They did that.
What name?
Huh?
What name?
What name, name? Because during the round of school, we already got, they start practicing.
We have to decide what period the license is gonna be for.
License is good for you, or you can.
What do you?
For the concession stand.
For the, through the rental.
Yeah, for the rental.
Okay, that's a solid. Yeah, oh, yeah.
And the local guy who does the, for the licenses that are on here too, got issues.
I usually just drive home, it's a nice little drive and get it done. I'm sorry, the third party does?
Yeah, she has one down here for me, man.
He does, he will, yes.
So, table.
Yeah, you good with that?
Yeah. Just wanted to bring to everybody's attention with this.
Okay.
These are the products, so. Any other questions, concerns, questions? Let me know.
Here, right.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Tracy. Mayor and council members, I am here as the new chair of planning and zoning to present our last meeting. We did go on to the new chair and vice chair, and I'm chair for the next year, and then Gray Reiner is vice chair.
The council needs to make a motion on all of your new elections.
Okay, so, so. I'm taking a motion from council to accept those two positions.
I'll make them separately or together?
You can do it together.
You can do it together.
I will abstain.
Yeah. I will make a motion to accept the new chair and co-chair for the planning and zoning commission.
I will second.
Is there any discussion? All right, Tom?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Floyd?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Four, oh, one.
So we just have a couple things that are coming back to you guys, so that you're aware of it. We did listen to, we got, do you want to talk about chickens? And we voted to send it back to, but no vote from our side. It's back in your court, we said no to that.
I have a question on that. I got a phone call over the weekend, in regards to chickens. Because there's a resident here that lives in town who has a, I think, a worse snake problem than bruised gut mustard problem. And they called on how to eliminate the snakes. The first year they lived here, they had ninety-some snakes. The second year was like fifty-seven, and they're currently at twelve as of yesterday, one day, so.
How are they getting counting the snakes?
They're, because there's so many on that there, yeah.
They're eradicated?
Are they, do they live by a marsh? No, they live on Mainy Lane. And so they think that there's a, a nest or something under there, and what they called for, the only way to get rid of snakes is chickens. So I got the phone call that said, what's the fine for chickens? I said, I'm not discussing this.
If you remove the food source, which is mice, they'll go away.
There was, this is a very long drawn-out discussion we had, and.
Who was saying?
What did you say?
I said, if you remove the food source for snakes, which is typically mice.
They don't have any mice.
They will go away.
Not typically garden snakes, though.
These are better snakes.
They're probably, it's probably got.
They think there's a nesting underneath.
They probably.
They don't have them.
They have.
They did have a nest under my mom's death.
Yeah.
And she would get a bunch of them, but once she got rid of the field mice problem, the snakes all go away.
I don't think they've ever had field mice that they've mentioned. They live like right in the heart of the development.
Yeah, she was one that everybody has field mice.
Well, yeah, I know, but, I don't know. But I'm just saying, that's the discussion. So they're asking if there's a fine on it, and I don't think we have a fine for it.
There's, definitely at this point, it's not allowed, so I imagine it would be treated similarly to any other, wouldn't issue.
Calls those guys.
Yeah.
We won't, we wouldn't enforce that, that would go back to an industry.
And this is again, very important, I would tell deputies.
Okay, so now it comes back full circle again, because that's what we would tell them to do with the call, right, probably, because there's ordinance and that's who, somebody needs to go to court.
The thing with the, it was a pretty big trigger from my mission was basically, what is the cost of, do we now have to have?
A fine to have.
County chair coming out to properties that are not permitted, or how are we keeping track of, how many chickens per property?
Well, yeah, you have a, an automatic fine for every violation of your zoning code. So currently is a violation of the zoning code, and there currently is a fine, and every violation is a misdemeanor.
Yeah, we've sent a treaty, we've sent a, you know, sent a letter.
Yeah.
Giving them X amount of days to.
They don't currently have chickens.
They don't currently have chickens, all right, they just want chickens.
They want chickens to eliminate the snakes, I'm saying it, it's the snakes. So.
This was a long.
It's a long, I know, it's kind of like the semi-issue, it just keeps coming back.
Semi-issue is coming back to you guys now, too.
I know.
Probably will keep coming back.
But didn't you say they had ninety, now they're down to twelve? No, that's just as of one, yesterday, they got twelve yesterday.
And then just.
And they're house, or they're just outside. They're everywhere, they open the garage during the snakes fall.
Oh.
They're everywhere, it's disgusting, it's really disgusting. But I, I happened to get the call yesterday, so.
I mean, there's a cheap fix, do some fuel later.
Well, that could cause a problem, they would call the fire department, so.
I'll be waking you up on that one.
I have also heard people have put gasoline on their ride cars to get rid of snakes.
Yeah, so.
Like, don't match, and just let it soak in.
They tried like.
Which is not a good thing either for the ground, but I know that.
I know that there's like a powder and tape, you know, or something like that, that they tried, multiple things that the DNR has suggested.
I would maybe suggest to them to have a exterminator called, or a pest control.
I think they, they talked about that, too.
I, I.
And I think that's where the powder stuff, you know, was from that.
I think we just, I think we let it ride, and then they choose to violate that ordinance at that point, then they come back and.
That's a.
Yeah, 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 so. And the other thing that's coming back before you guys now is temporary semi-truck parking standards. The one session we had was about the hours to accommodate, would be nine PM to five AM. And no running of the semi-trucks between that time and right, nine PM to five AM, they have to have those shots, if they are in, in the area, how do we put it in there? So in areas.
Running residential property.
Running a residential property. So if they headed out of Emery, on the backside of their property, which was into residential property, they could not run their trucks between nine PM and five AM. If they're sitting on the front side of it, on the street side, they could run them, because there's no houses there. But if they're in a residential area, they cannot run them between nine and five, so that's not going back to you guys for a while.
You know, we did a noise experience back with Emery's, three, couple, couple years ago, anyway, for that housing development back there, and they had semis running, we had no clue, it didn't even pick up on their little.
Yeah, they, well.
We had no clue.
I was in part of the meeting at that point, and it was said that you could hear semis running across the street. That's, that was the point that was made, and I was listening for a while, I.
As long as.
Nine o'clock's kind of early, though, to me, that to say that you have to park by nine, and then you're, especially in the summertime, and there's truck drivers that are going till ten or eleven, and then, then they're parking.
Well, they can, they can bring them in and park them out here nine, they just can't run them. So they can come in, they can't run them, like, they can't run them all night long, is what we're trying to prevent. So you can't run them from nine PM to five AM. You can come in and turn it off at eleven o'clock at night, we don't care about that. You just can't have them running, you know, to conserve gas or diesel or whatever you want to say, between nine and five. I mean, most people who, we talked about that, too, most people who are going over the road, who are trucking, are probably pulling out by four and one anyways. You know, if they're driving days, they're gone. You know, four or five, they're out the door and gone, so they're probably not gonna run them at night.
Then you have a problem, like, what do they do in the winter?
Yeah, I don't know. If they're running down the residential property, they can't run them between nine and five. So if they wanna go into, you know, commercial property area and run them all night long, we can care less, as long as it's not residential.
But then they can't park them on the streets.
But we're looking at, there's a couple of commercial, we're looking at one commercial or two commercial areas that would allow them to run them at night.
If you.
If you look at your, um, maintenance and stuff, it's in there.
You have miles, maybe you have miles, if you, if you wanna have miles per cent.
You can look through the actual, like, the ordinance itself, just to kind of go over what the agreement on recommendations were. So you'll find in your agenda pack, it's, there's no number for it right now, but the So, you'll find in your agenda pack, it's, there's no number four right now, but the number twenty nineteen dash to be filled in. There's amendments to a number of chapters, but that's, the basic idea is that we'll be allowing this temporary loading truck parking in the B two highway commercial, I one light industrial and I two general industrial. Would be handled as a conditional use permit in the, of the B two districts, which would therefore require a public hearing. And then by administrative permit in the I one and the I two districts. The reason we're treating it as an administrative permit as opposed to just flat out permitted use in those districts is so that, uh, myself or any of these own administrative future would have to have a review of a site plan before we would allow anyone to use this use. Uh, part of the way we kind of structured this ordinance and how I wrote it up was to have pretty strict requirements in terms of the standards we're applying, in terms of noise, uh, pollution, time of use, all that. But still allowing some flexibility given that there's only so many parcels in the city that we can even, uh, consider for this type of use. Um, you'll see the first number there, so chapter ten oh two is the actual definition of what, uh, temporary semi truck parking is. Uh, the key points there is that it would be for more than seven consecutive days. And then it'd be a separate use from a truck stop, which would, uh, provide stuff like food or lodging. There won't be any of that allowed, uh, under this type of use. Uh, next, that ten nineteen is really where the meat of these standards that they have to meet, uh, would be. So, you can see point A there is the setback requirements. Uh, the front yard has a twenty-five foot setback from right of way. That's the, or the standard front yard setback for a principal building in the district, whichever is greater. Uh, the side yard setback is going to typically be ten feet from the side rear lot line unless it's a building or residential property, in which case we push it out to three feet from that lot line. Again, trying to get a truck away as far as we can from residential lots while still allowing this to be uh, applied to lots in the city and being the workable ordinance for businesses. Uh, this point B is, uh, kind of what I was talking about with the flexibility of property commercial present the site plan, which demonstrates adequate space for truck circulation, entrance, egress. Uh, we're not setting a specific circulation requirements like you see with, uh, other parts of this ten nineteen chapter. Just because obviously we're going to be dealing with, uh, sites and lots that have very different layouts in the first place. This is where all of them will be subject to at least administrative review, if not, uh, conditional use permit and review. So, we'd be able to see that there is in fact adequate space for these trucks to be maneuvering, not impacting overall traffic levels on the streets. Um, again, much like a lot of our other types of uses like this, it should be screened for any view of residential districts uh, in accordance with these screen requirements of ten twenty dash five. Uh, regardless of whether they're dispensing, uh, gas and motor oil on site, they're going to be held to requirements of any, uh, that we had on our ordinance for that. That's pretty standard for basically any auto focused use in the city. They're allowed to be there requirements. Um, like we had mentioned on lots which are but a residential property, on a reduced noise pollution trust will not allow that. I don't want to be started between the hours of nine PM and five PM, or five AM, excuse me. Uh, like Tracy mentioned, that's kind of the sticking point that we had between uh, what is workable for, uh, truck drivers that need to be on the road at a certain time or have a truck run overnight during the winter to keep it from the engine from stalling up in the morning. There's not really a perfect solution to this issue. We found that, uh, nine PM to five AM presented maybe the best compromise between not impacting any surrounding residential districts while still allowing for, um, as best use as possible for truck drivers themselves. And this was one of the conditions that the commission said for their renovation approval was to have this rule only apply to uh, properties abiding residential properties themselves. First, it was any, uh, use that was going to, or any property that was going to have this use. That was changed from the commission to here.
So, basically, it's just saying that because it's, most of it's about Emery's, that if they're at the back of it, they can't run their vehicle. But if they're at the front towards the highway, they can't.
And that would apply for Emery's or if there was, uh, for example, we have that industrial area on the east side of town there, but it's present, uh, range of, we just call it development. If there was a case where someone wanted to put this use there because there was the abiding with the residential district, they'd have to follow that idling rule again. Where we don't have as much of a concern as if it's a purely
It's not by you guys, but by your company.
But that's where it's talking. That's where it's talking. There's a train tracks. Because, yeah, you have the train track, I mean, so
Yeah, I would actually, now you went to your
At CCC, I mean, if you're looking at there, I mean, um, you know, I mean, I know they're bringing some eyes in and out basically twenty-four seven. I mean, there is idling and stuff going on there. Um, granted, it's not prolonged that they're sitting there all night long idling. But with that, I, I can see a little bit of variance because you do have the train tracks, you know. You've got and, well, and there's a spur line in there too, so, I mean, you have a decent amount of distance between, um
The other area they asked about parking was right behind the liquor store.
Yeah.
Yeah, buddy of the residential And there's more than thirty feet.
Yeah, still, that wouldn't happen, I mean, that wouldn't apply to them.
Yeah, um, I know it gets, you talk about parking behind the, uh, behind the lick. On the, on the property or on the street?
That has been brought that people would like to park there. I mean, we had discussed that, that this rule wouldn't apply, you know, those hours wouldn't apply because there's no residential in that area.
I believe the existing ordinance about the parking on public streets applies only to residential
Residential and not industrial.
There's existing ordinance on, what's this you got from, I think it's twenty fifteen, where this was an issue back then and they decided to disallow any parking on residential streets of, or on trucks. The reason that we're kind of going through this again is that we take away that option, but there isn't another option available in the area in terms of where to park.
Emery's has agreed to let people park there.
Yep. I just know that sometimes it does become, uh, like, uh, somewhat of a traffic jam blocking of, uh, stuff, um, over behind the liquor store on Third Street.
I don't know why people actually park there.
Um, we used to have like four of them that would try and park inward, you should park two. And then you have the guy who runs the business out of the back of the mini storage. That semis pull in, turn around and then have to back all the way up to the mini storage. Um, that's why there was a semi parked in the stovebag for forty-eight hours this past winter because he missed the driveway and so, um, to me, I guess, being out there frequently, um, to me, it needs to be capped to two semis if you're going to allow parking over there.
I don't know what kind of, I don't know what kind of demand we had. We know that there's only one place that they can park in both of them, that's at Pike's.
And there's also
They can park at Walmart.
Yeah, Walmart and then the, yeah, and Joplin, there's
The major stuff, yeah, I think they, I think Walmart does
I think Walmart requires that, but it don't be Pike's does. And I think they can park at, um, the one they built, the Good Mills.
Pretty close to residential.
But they won't park there. That's what our understanding is from the research.
And you know, one thing that's not mentioned here is the fuel system of the truck when they're running. Are we going to allow them to go up and down the city streets, which aren't built for semis?
Well, they have to, they have to be parked in almost any area, so when they're at Emery or in the industrial park, are the only places that they're going to be allowed to park.
It also
It's something they can be right, uh, alongside the house.
No, but because, but order Emery's, remember, on the backside of property that is residential, so they cannot run, they can park over there, they just cannot run them on the backside of the property. They have to have them shut off between nine and five, but they can park there. And he's got hookups on the front for seven semis, from my understanding, who had told us that he seven semis can plug in there. On the front side of his property.
Yep.
Can we take about a one or two minute break? Let me stop.
Back there, don't want me to let semi drivers wanting to
I know probably four.
Yeah. There's only two, they're repetitive issues. Okay.
Meantime, we have two in our, one on your street and one on Breckin Beach. I don't know if you've noticed him parking across, um
The race shop. Regarding, okay.
Yeah. There's that Bush truck that parks there and then you have
You know, the box truck on the main street?
You got a box truck in your street, you have the Michael's truck.
People requested parking personalized.
The things, the tollboxes, then you have a Bush truck that parks
Why is it under ten?
I'm sure it just allows, I think, more than ten people that
He can only put seven out at Emery's, so then they'd have to find other spots in the industrial park to put any more than seven, because that's what he said.
It's definitely a quarter minute.
Right. If, if, you know, if they don't want to put them in, I think he can, I don't know where you can put across the back there, I have no idea. I don't know how big his property is back there at Emery's. I don't know. But not his property, you know, they come and you can put across the back, behind the building. And I don't know that, what his, he was going to charge, he didn't really tell us what his plans were, did he? I think he was just, I think he was just going to let him.
I think so.
I don't think he was going to charge them to park there.
Right, because I mean, just seeing his discussion to, like, just, he was going to just let him do what he sees.
Uh, Lloyd, you had a question about air pollution specifically from the trucks. So, point H on that set of standards would be that they usually consistent with the applicable general performance standards outlined in chapter ten sixteen. Chapter ten sixteen has a lot of different language, both in terms of noise pollution, air pollution, uh, dust, dirt tracking and et cetera, et cetera. Basically, we didn't feel there was any need to have any additional controls beyond what was already prescribed in the general performance standards chapter.
Do you have any more questions?
Also, just to finish right through, uh, chapter ten seven one, which is the B two highway business district, would be amended to allow this as a conditional use. Uh, the use would meet all standards as we've discussed in chapter ten nineteen, as well as the general performance standards of ten sixteen. Uh, similar sort of situation for both chapters ten eighty I one and chapters ten eighty-one I two. But in this case being by administrative permit, as we discussed earlier. Otherwise, uh, so it's many, I know, of different chapters, but the basic idea behind it is pretty straightforward, what we talked about.
So, you're regardless, they need a permit to let's go to City Hall.
Yes, no matter what, if anyone wants to do this use whether in a I district or a B district, they'll have to come in and get a permit. The difference will be that for anyone in a B two highway business districts, there will also be a public hearing associated with that. Without being there to just be transparent about it, for the most part, our B two district has a lot of properties that do abut residential districts, more so than our I districts, obviously. Uh, having the public hearing is sort of, uh, uh, rip the bandied off quickly in terms of any kind of negative public comments. Rather than seeming like we're trying to sneak something through.
So, I can tell you, the reason Devin put a number on this, um, ordinance was she wanted, before you passed it as an ordinance, she wanted you to make sure you had everything all covered. Um, what Miles presented and Tracy and if you had anything you needed changed or any questions and then the intent was, um, to clean it all up and make it an ordinance and bring it to the main meeting and pass it as an ordinance at the main meeting. So, that's why there's not an ordinance number on it.
So, do you want a motion or just?
If it's not being passed at tonight's meeting, councilperson, it's fine. If there's anything that you all have a consensus that you want changed or added or deleted, you can advise as such, but you don't need to motion.
Is there any more discussion of this? More?
So, you guys can, I mean, if it comes, we clean it up at our next meeting and then bring it to me. You don't give that?
Yeah.
Our next meeting is next Wednesday. Um, and then our main meeting is moved to May eighth instead of the third Wednesday. Um, Deb has a family function she wants to go to, so as a commission meeting, a very tough move a week earlier, so she could attend her family function.
Sounds good. Thank you, thank you.
Um, I do have a question, maybe it's for eighty-two. Um, she mentioned about the chickens. There's no motion, it needs to be ruled out, is it, because the ordinance said that it was new?
Correct, yeah, your ordinance says it's written currently private, so.
Yeah, the only change would be if the resident wanted to make a, uh, you know, show the truck, if you were to change themselves. Which case that would, you know, be, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
So, uh, council is probably aware that staff was previously working with a developer on the development of the preserved property uh, following a, I believe you all went out for a request for proposals back in the summer of last year. Had a developer, um, express interest and we worked with him to try to get a, uh, development it, going through the process, but that developer did ultimately back out. Staff has been contacted by another developer who is interested in the preserved property. However, before he puts any type of work into preparing preliminary plans or determining whether or not the space will work with his idea, he wants an assurance from the city that he will be able to ultimately purchase the property if it turns out that it works out for him. So, what you have in front of you today is an option agreement for approval. This agreement would give that developer the sole right to purchase the property for, uh, period of, I believe we went with six months until October ninth of this year. Um, so he has until October ninth to decide whether or not he would want to purchase the property. Uh, in the meantime, he's seen not be able to offer the property for sale to any other developer. If during that time period, the developer did want to purchase the property, it would be at a cost not exceed sixty thousand dollars. And I did touch base with staff on this because I know that the city's idea was to offer the property for sale for the costs that the city had put into it and nothing else. And so, staff didn't feel that sixty thousand dollars would cover, um, all the past and future costs that we put into the property. Um, and then in addition to the sixty thousand dollar price, we would also negotiate a contract for private development like we had planned on doing with a previous purchaser. So, um, all the terms of that would be negotiated if and when the, the developer decides that he wants to purchase the property. So, I think that's about the, the most important information regarding this option. Uh, Miles can probably tell you more about the developer if you have questions. Otherwise, I would just be looking for a motion from you to approve this option agreement.
So, I do have one question. Um, the purchase of the sixty, uh, the price for sixty thousand is just for what we've put into the land, the cost of the land itself. It would still be responsible for like the A U A R charges. So, that would
Right, so any, yeah, so any development charges or fees, uh, would be something that we would be contemplating under either this agreement or the purchase agreement, that would be contemplated if and when they submitted an application to CLAT.
Yeah, this is purely for the purchase of the land itself.
But now, if we okay this, he ties it up for ninety days?
It ties it up until October ninth of this year.
Yeah, and, uh, what if somebody else would come along now that the development is starting to pick up?
You would not be able to sell yourself.
Ninety days is a long time to tie a button.
That's more than ninety days.
Yeah, it's six months, six months. But I think, I do think staff could probably speak to you regarding the amounts of interest there's been in the back end.
There is, I would say there's been some interest since, uh, previous over, didn't walk away from the project, but this rule that's indicated a really strong showing in terms of interest. Uh, we can say that it is led by, uh, Mr. Gary Barker, who's not a Montrose resident, but a local Wright County resident, who's working with a number of different people to bring in, uh, kind of a really complex project where it will be uh, housing for all ages in terms of, uh, they don't know exactly what style of housing, something like a kind of house duplex style. And then as well as a apartment style senior living facility that would be somewhere between, uh, forty and sixty beds that are anticipated. They still need to go through a process of kind of doing the demographic studies for the area to see what the uh, capacity they can do for that type of facility, which is part of the reason why this option purchasing being put into place. There's a lot of costs that they will end up approving in terms of, uh, study for that assisted living facility and for just general preliminary and final applied fees. So, uh, where all this is locking the property into a single development group for that period of time. This is, uh, largely common for a lot of these type of development projects in terms of it shows a commitment on both parties' ends to, uh, get the capital to work, basically.
Miles, you might want to let me know, we did do a study here right after we got the, the property and so, I mean
I think that was, I think in two thousand seven, two thousand eightish, correct, or?
No.
No, it's exactly about the property.
After we bought the property, because I didn't, I didn't get on council until twelve.
No. Thirteen, fourteen.
Thirteen, fourteen, somewhere there, it was, it was after then. So, I mean, it's not that
No, they generally do a, I don't know what the range was on that city. Was it purely Montrose or was it also surrounding communities? Usually they do like
I, I don't remember.
Yeah, and we can look into that.
But, yeah, so, I mean, maybe they wouldn't have to go spending as much, but, I mean, but it also, you know, like Michelle pointed out too, I mean, we've had this property for five, seven years. You know? And Yeah. So, um, I guess, I'm willing to move forward with this option agreement.
Yeah, and again, this is not, and that is not a purchase agreement, this This is clearly, again, like Amy mentioned, is an option to purchase. If after the six months, uh, the developer decides not to do this, they will file a complaint and leave. There's no commit in on our, in past that. So that, one of our, uh, kind of concerns when we add this to all the coming on there was, was there anything existing with the previous over to this, uh, you know, that language, which it wasn't. Um, but I can definitely see that the level of interest from the group seems, uh, very high.
And they are aware that this, uh, um, in no way operates as a sort of approval to any kind of development they decide they wanna do. So obviously, they still would have to go through the entire development approval process if you would have all of your rights of controlling that process that you have.
And the plans that they're looking at doing is the plans that we originally wanted anyway, somewhere.
Yes, they, uh, two originally, they were part of the original RFP process, uh, way back when. And then this is, they submitted, one that had a commercial incorporated into it and one without the commercial, more focused on the residential and the city of living. They're looking at that second option there of, uh, commercial not being as much of an option in the area. And from the city staff perspective, we also don't see as much value in, uh, bringing commercial onto that kind of periphery of the city as opposed to overseeing the commercial activity in the downtown area.
Do we need a motion then, most of them?
Yep, a motion to approve the option.
I'll make a motion to approve the option agreement. I'll second.
All right, Lloyd.
I've got about no, but six months to tie a piece of property that might end up being sold at the maintenance, I'm gonna vote.
Um, I'll vote aye. Kirby?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Uh, we have a new business, Tom, management coordinating.
Yes, um, management coordinating committee, I believe it should be terminated and replaced with a, just a, the original intent was to have personnel issues discussed at the speaker. I think we ought to just reinstate the personnel committee and, and meet when required, when necessary. There's a personnel issue. 'Cause, uh, I had a real problem with things being discussed at this meeting that were not, uh, did not include the full city council, like the engineering company and all that kinda stuff. I don't think that was, uh, the right place to discuss those kinds of things.
Council discussion?
One thing I hate to see about the technicalities is cutting out communications and closing staff members and council members.
Well, we still have staff.
I mean, you know, we're supposed to be transparent on, keep it, hold a meeting so that nobody knows what's going on.
There were two council members and the mayor present at this meeting and we were discussing things that should be presented to the full council, that's my point.
Well, actually, that's how that, uh, personnel meeting originally started out is only not to okay anything. It was just to discuss things that might come up on the agenda or to be put on the agenda.
However-
And that's why we had it Monday before the meeting.
The discussion should be made with the full council.
Well, we can have the full council there, we got three now, so it's open to everybody.
Well, I-
But we still shouldn't be-
What does management coordinating mean to you?
Well, I, I did not come up with that handle. Uh, I don't know who did.
It was changed from personnel because other than, I mean, many things other than personnel were being discussed at the meeting and so it wasn't, nobody felt comfortable calling it a personnel meeting. So that's why it got changed, because if it's a personnel meeting, it should be discussing personnel issues and not what you want on the agenda. So I think that's why it got changed.
Yeah, I think we all agree that we were, I think we all agree that we were looking at having a workshop on the fifth Monday very, you know, throughout the year, every fifth Monday, we would have a workshop. And that's the perfect opportunity for the full council to get together and discuss the kinds of things that were discussed at this meeting with just three, three people.
I can, I can tell you years ago, we used to do that, we used to have meetings on that fifth Monday. Mm-hmm, and it, it actually worked out really well. Because then it's open to everybody, um, it's a small setting, it's, but it's still open to the public and it's, and it's actually worked out very well in the past. And I know the city of Buffalo, I believe, still does it, they've been doing it for years, I think it's still working.
Right, I think the only thing that, um, could potentially be a concern, I don't have an issue going with every fifth Monday workshop, but, um, if something were to come up saying you brought up the engineering issue, um, I think that's part of the reason why I was there is because there was concerns with the city engineer currently. And if you can read in the minutes, it does say to bring it to council, you know, for councils.
Well, I mean, why, yeah, why go the effort? We can just have a workshop and discuss it and make decisions.
Like I said, if it's, um, since that issue is brought up now and that fifth council meeting is not until, when's the next fifth Monday? I have an idea, two months from now. How do you address that issue?
Well, we have, we have one coming.
Have it for-
But, correct, but if we don't have, so say the engineering is the issue, I mean, it's just, that's, that's what we gave. If we didn't have that fifth council meeting this month, when would the next one be?
But we're not making any decisions on it anyway, right?
Right, it comes to the council.
Yeah, it's gonna come to the council.
But there's some stuff that gotta be done, man. Why don't we have the fourth Monday then?
We used to have, we said a second.
So you wanna have two, two ba, two, basically two council meetings, one council meeting and one workshop every month? I'm, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
I believe in talking things over.
Yeah.
In the right environment, with the right people on board.
We used to do it that way and then if there was nothing for discussion, we just canceled it.
Yeah, that's quite often.
Yeah, your other option, your other option is to do, um, if it's something like you're saying, Michelle, like the, you know, like the engineering, something that was, you thought was very important, you can, you can always do a special meeting too if you need to.
Right, it's easier just if you have something scheduled, already on the books, instead of going, okay.
But what he's saying is that, that's something that shouldn't just be discussed amongst three people, though, even management.
Right, it was a topic brought up that said bring it to council, inform council as to what's going on. So, and that's why it's in the minutes too, but, don't matter to me, I don't. I need one.
As long as we have the fourth Monday, that's just like a regular time, so it's fine, isn't it?
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to, uh, terminate our management coordinating committee and replace it with a, uh, workshop meeting every fourth Monday with the full council and the mayor present.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Uh, what time works, your thoughts on the timing, do you like in the afternoon like?
Well, whoever works for people, I mean, uh-
Works for everybody.
You know, we could do, you know, 3:30, it was our management coordinating meeting, was at 3:30, can we do that?
3:30 would be okay.
3:30?
That was telling you when, when you usually work, I'm almost there.
Yeah.
We'll make it work, I have meetings and attendance at 3:30, so 3:30, 4 o'clock, so I don't think it was gonna-
Okay, let's, let's call it for 3:30.
Okay, sounds good to me.
And then we have to continue, oh, sorry, we'll take a vote, um, and make it at City Hall. Yes, yes. So we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Kirby?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, Ben?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
So then we have to go back to, we still have the personnel, three people in case of-
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And those will be just, you know, as, like, here.
Yeah. Okay, everybody's good with that? All right, um, upcoming meetings in this highway tour, where you develop, like, Kirby, can you make that?
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if you, I wasn't sure if you, you just had a different job.
Yeah, well, well, we'll see.
Okay.
That's a discussion for a different time.
Okay, all right.
I might not need that.
And as Tracy mentioned, the planning zoning meeting has been switched to the next month. Um, stated the address that 25th at the Citizen State Bank. Next city council workshop is the 29th here, 3:30 at City Hall. Um, they just switched the management coordinating meeting. Um, Parker Rec also has, is gonna be switching their meetings to, for the next three months. Um, the first Wednesday of the month due to conflicts with, um, half of our commission, their children are in sporting events. So through the summer months, we're gonna switch it to Wednesdays.
Michelle, just to note too, that the first one here is on the 8th, which is the second Wednesday.
The second Wednesday, okay.
It's actually the second Wednesday.
Okay. So that's when they would be, wouldn't it? It'd be the second Wednesdays. Can I say the third?
Well, we, we voted on the first, but that first week, the eighth or whatever, it's the second Wednesday.
Oh, okay.
So just a point of clarification.
All right, and then, uh, the regular city council meeting is Monday, May 13th. Um, I believe there's a gentleman sitting here who may have, that's all of our upcoming meetings, but I, did you have something?
Before you go on, so do you still wanna do, we don't need to do the council workshop then on the 29th, but we're gonna meet the fourth Monday? Cause that's the fifth Monday. So cancel the workshop and change it to the fourth?
I thought we changed that one to a special.
We change it to a special anyway?
So you wanna still-
So we just start it in May?
Then start the fourth?
Yeah.
Okay, so do this.
So we'll leave this one to the special, yeah.
And, okay.
And start the fourth in May, that work for you then? Okay, all right. Did you have something?
I do.
Okay.
I believe I was up earlier, I came in late.
You were actually on the consent agenda.
Huh?
You were actually on the consent agenda, so.
I was.
Yeah, so there really wasn't any discussion.
Oh, really, so I've been sitting through all this.
I was just trying to get your attention, sorry.
Uh, it's okay, you're probably saving me from coqueto right now. Um, do you have any questions about the assessment agreement? None at all. Dewey's been great to work with, you know, I worked with him back, uh, when I started at the county. And, uh, I always said to Dewey, you know, I'd really like to have Montrose, it, it's a city I'd like to have. We've got, you know, 11 cities already right now and we just, I'd like to continue at least getting the cities, uh, done through the county. And he goes, I'll let you know, I'll let you know, and he let me know about three, three and a half weeks ago. So, you know, I have a plan for, uh, getting the, the person in line to do the work. So, uh, I'd like to have a little more time than three weeks, but we'll make it work and I appreciate it. Um, you guys, you, you signed off on it or do I need to leave it with you?
We're moving forward.
Moving forward?
Yep, yep.
Okay, I've got my signature on it.
Okay.
So at any point that you guys wanna do that, that, that would be fine. Did you look to see the cost?
I was gonna say, can you clarify that please?
I can. Um, right now, the way that we charge is by the parcel and it's for every real estate parcel, personal property parcel and exempt parcel. Uh, at last count, Montrose had 1,843. Uh, our current assessment rate, uh, going forward is gonna be $13 per parcel. In 2021, it'd be $14 per parcel. And, um, so everything we're talking about right now wouldn't be payable till next year around May. Uh, so you have time to budget and everything involved with that. The other thing that we do is that we charge for new construction homes, new construction, um, um, homes over 500,000, new construction, commercial over 500,000. Uh, the homes are $50 apiece and the, uh, the commercial in homes over 500,000 are $150 apiece. Typically, with the, uh, permitting process, people will, um, pass that through to the person who's actually applying for the permit. That's the way that we see that, so it's not a surprise cost you, all of a sudden you start booming and you got a whole bunch of new homes. I mean, look at City of Oz, you go, 300 new homes, that can be sizable. So, um, since I was on consent agenda, I don't wanna take a lot more of your time. I just wanted, wanted to, uh, have a conversation if you had any questions about the contract and, uh, that's it. All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Yep.
Off to coqueto.
Have fun. Just so you're aware, we pass it on, the, so the new homes, we pass it on, on the building, Kirby?
That'd happen on your permit, permit, permit. We don't do that, we would charge the city, you guys would get your fee through the-
We collect the building permits for the new homes.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
Um, all right, we went on to acknowledgements. Uh, I would like to acknowledge Public Works. Um, I'm not sure who it was, was it Coco and whoever cleaned up the front of City Hall, they did a great job. I know it was Coco, was it Ryan?
I think it was John or Ryan.
John. I don't know if you guys have seen it, but they cleaned up all the bushes and stuff right up there by the front door. It looks really nice, so.
Uh, I would say the one thing, just to watch the community page, I'm not sure if there is some big, mega storm coming through this week that they'll be opposed about, you know, emergency winter parking and stuff.
Well, I've signed this, you're saying, no parking up to April 1st or snowfall, so.
I'd like to acknowledge the fire department, um, I'd like to acknowledge man, or Josh Menard for his years of service. Um, you know, when I get to sit in a lot of their meetings, um, great group of guys, the, um, the gals, they put in a lot of hard work and to me, they don't get enough thanks.
I'd like to acknowledge the volunteer, you know, she's not here. For all the help she's given, trying to get the EDA, EDA spot, uh, all the contacts and things we made, so she's done a really good job of that.
Anyone else? I think our motion to adjourn.
My question.
Oh, there?
Second, I'll second.
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion passes five zero.
No, I said it.
Oh, I thought I heard it down there.
Yeah, it was on there.
Steve said it.
Oh. Steve said he said it. I, I thought I heard something, I said.